Hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to another episode of the Rad Life. You know, if you haven't noticed, I don't think we ever got out of it, by the way, since the last, last time it happened, but we are heading into election season again. We are within ninety days of, of November elections this year. It's compounded. It's not just local elections. We have general election going on as well, and some of you know that I live in San Clemente and I every, every time this comes around, I've been doing this show for five years. Every time this comes around, this is my sixth year. I like to, excuse me, I like to bring on some people that are running. I'm always curious about what makes people run. I've been asked to run a number of times and I just can't get myself to do that. I figured at, at the right moment, at the right time, maybe I'll get the bug. It's, it's, it's an arduous task. It's, it's a very demanding role and rightfully so. This, these are people that we elect to represent us. So I'd like to give a platform on the Rad Life every time we have an election season to people that are running to come on to, to, to share with, 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 with myself and the audience, you know, what it is that they are bringing, hoping to bring to the table. What are their vision and their platform, if you will, is, and so we are kicking off the 2020 election season with a gentleman who is putting his hat in the ring for a seat on city council in San Clemente. Tyler Bowden, who is a local and I'm going to bring Tyler on and I, I want him to introduce himself and see what actually is causing him to throw his hat in the race in the 2020 elections. Oh, look at you with that view. Yeah, that never gets old, does it? That never gets old.
Never gets old.
No, that's for, for people who are listening who are not familiar. This is what we suffer with every day and every sunset in San Clemente, the good old San Clemente Pier, right there at the end of Del Mar.
What a life.
What a life. Yeah, we are very, we are very blessed. Sometimes we forget to go on vacation and you know why? You can see it right there behind Tyler.
Because we live where you vacation.
We, we live where you vacation. That's a good one. You know what? Somebody should coin that for the city. We live where you vacation. So why aren't you, why aren't you here already spending money? So I was saying before I put you on is every, you know, I've been doing this show for almost going on six years. It'll be next February. And I have always tried to provide a platform for people. I think because I have sort of this morbid curiosity that why do people actually run for office? And, and I, I said that, you know, I've been asked to do that every once in a while to consider doing it, and I just can't get myself to do it just yet. So maybe one day, but so, you know, here we are. Election season 2020, we're probably what, like about ninety days away or something like that?
Just shy, yeah.
Just shy, just shy of ninety days.
Yeah.
And not only do we have a very heated, I will use the nice word, a very heated national general election going on, but we also have it up and down the ticket and you know, it's, it's almost, it's almost a cliche, but it's, I think it's very meaningful and very true that all news is local news. All things that are local are really, you know, whether, whether it's, it's because we have become a lot more insulated and a lot more sort of tribalistic in our society or whatever, but I think especially in town like San Clemente and I've been here since eighty-seven. It's always better, I've been from my perspective to be, to live in a town where people are engaged versus not engaged. And there are a lot of places around us that for whatever reason, they're commuter, commuter towns or what have you, that people are not as engaged maybe as we are in San Clemente. And somebody who's listening to this right now is going, yeah, you guys are way over engaged down San Clemente. But, but you know, little success stories of late, you know, we, we were able to, to coalesce, the town came together around the toll road issue, the San Antonio free issue. You know, it, it, it is heartwarming when, when we do, you know, talk to one another and coalesce versus, you know, be divided or, or get into our own little, little camps. But that's also part of this, part of, part of the culture. I think you got a surf culture that basically has sort of a, a sense of possession of certain surf spots and sort of like pride of, pride of town and one town, one team. So here you are. Now, this is not, this is not your first engagement with, with, with being involved with the city, right?
No, no, it's not. I've been involved directly with city, city government for two, two and a half years. I've, I'm serving on the, the human affairs committee for the city right now. So I was appointed by a previous council to serve on the human affairs committee. And to your point about, you know, why would you do this? That's pretty much how every conversation I've had with somebody about this starts is, you know, good for you, but why are you doing this? You know, because it, it does have a tendency to be a very divisive kind of city political environment. And a lot of that I think is, is driven and influenced by the national political landscape.
It's, it's very, it's very true. It does trickle down to that because that, that heated. And, and let's be kind of nice about it. The passionate feelings regardless which side of the equation it is on whatever issue it may be is at the, you, you hope that ninety percent of the time is driven by an authentic interest and passion versus some sort of ulterior motive. But it is, it is, it does, it does influence it for sure. I don't think it's an isolated situation. You know, it, it, the, the, the thing about, the thing about election seasons too, and I mean, again, you know, I don't, you, you know, none of us that have been paying attention for any of this and engaged in it and sort of take pride in being involved and exercising our sort of civic responsibility of educating ourselves and then engaging in the election, election process. None of us, I think, are, are naive enough to not think that it is a blood sport. It is some sort of combat sport. I mean, it, it, it tends to, it tends to be, it's very, it's a, it's a competition. It's competitive, right? And you know, you are, you're only limited by your own civility or you know, if you basically say there's no holds barred, whatever it takes and that tends to be your approach. And you know, people get to experience that. They watch it. They see the exchange and you know, we want our candidates that are going to represent us to also be tested, so to speak. And, and that they're going to basically not crumble. So I get that. I do. But before we get into that, because I did want to establish that benchmark that you did act, you have actually been involved with, with local city government. Give people a little background about yourself. You're, you know, you're, you're kind of your, your linkage to San Clemente, et cetera. And then we'll get into the, into the, into the ring, so to speak.
Absolutely. So I, I moved to San Clemente when I was twelve years old. And so, you know, went to schools here, graduated from San Clemente High fourteen years ago and, and you know, living here changed my life. It really shaped, shaped who I am. That first summer living here, I walked up the road, was living on Cabrillo, tried out for a play at the Cabrillo Playhouse.
Sure.
And you know, became an actor and was an actor through high school and, and, and that really led in, in college at San Diego State to getting involved in student government, being comfortable being in front of people and eventually running for and being elected as their president and CEO of their student government. And that really set me up very well, a lot of leadership training experience and, and just kind of like hard knocks experience, just in the process of being president of a student body of around thirty-five thousand students.
Yeah, it's not a small campus. That's a huge campus.
It's a huge campus. The government has, has a, you know, multimillion dollar budget and a lot of issues that we were facing back in two thousand nine and ten. And so that kind of cut my teeth on what leadership is and what it requires. And, and so, you know, after traveling a bit, taking different jobs, starting a career, I moved back to San Clemente about five years ago. And I've just, you know, been watching from a distance to see, you know, the city government because it's something I'm passionate about in general. And I eventually decided, you know, I really would like to learn more about this. I'd like to dive more in. And so I did, you know, a version of the leadership program that they did. At the time it wasn't eight weeks. It was just like a one night, three hour PowerPoint presentation, but learned a lot and then joined the human affairs committee. And as, you know, the past two years, I've been getting more and more involved, learning more and more about it. And I just see, I see a lot of ways where my leadership experience over the past fifteen years could benefit the city. You know, if I were able to get in there and dive in and, and apply my skills, I think I could, I could add some value to it.
And so let's start, let's talk a little bit about, about what does the human affairs committee? Because I mean, people may be familiar with, you know, parks and rec, they may be familiar with you know, the city council, some of the other commissions that are involved, but not necessarily human affairs. So let's talk about that because again, I think the time that you have been engaged in local government, the last couple of years have been actually a pretty heated, pretty kind of heightened engagement and local government. I mean, you know, I think that we will look back at the last few years and think, you know, that this was sort of a a fork in the road for the town. And, and so let's talk about what human affairs does and then, you know, some of the stuff that maybe you encountered.
Yeah, that's a great question about the human affairs committee. And when I joined it two years ago, you know, my first meeting, I even questioned after the meeting, like, what exactly are we working on? You know, what, what are we, what is our mission? What is our goal? And I, I spent a lot of time working on that and, and researching what previous human affairs committees had done. And it's actually quite surprising how much has come out of the human affairs committee. You know, there's, there's members of the committee that were, you know, leaders in the, in the senior center and the development of that in, in town, the wellness and prevention center. And I really think the, the human affairs committee is, is driven by its membership and it's only as good as it's the sum of its parts. And it's, it's been stronger in some years than others. But I think over the past couple of years, as you mentioned, we've really been facing the homelessness issue. And, and so the charge of the human affairs committee is to act as a sounding board for the city council on matters pertaining to the health, safety and welfare of the citizen, the residents of San Clemente. So homelessness is a part of that.
Sure.
And, and so we took it as a charge to try to address that issue. And I was one of the architects of the town hall meeting on homelessness that we had last year that was led by then pro temp Dan, Mayor Pro Temp Dan Bain and, and council member Laura Ferguson, which I thought was a really successful, productive and educational event for, for the entire community, just learning about the details of this very large and complex issue that, that we're facing as a city and as a county and as a state, as a country. And, and so, you know, we, we've been working with the council in various ways. Obviously we're just a committee and we don't have any authority. And so there's been certain ways where we maybe have wanted to take action or, or do work, but maybe it's not, it's not been authorized by the council. So that's kind of the, the Tango.
But that's not unusual. I mean, that is the role of, of commissions and committees. They are an advisory role to the city council because the city council isn't basically inundated with so much that, that, that draws on their attention that, you know, areas of focus that may require a little bit more detailed engagement, they are counting on other people to do some of the heavy lifting and then advising them.
Yes. And that's a great point to, to talk about doing the heavy lifting. I definitely see that because, you know, currently there's seven members of the human affairs committee. Recently the council passed an ordinance change to reduce committee membership to just five members. But those are all, you know, very interested and engaged community members who want to do work. And, and that's something having served on, on a committee, I do know that maybe the, the, the interests and the energy and motivation of those committee members isn't activated quite as much as it could be by the council and city government. And that's something I'd like to focus on if I'm elected is, is to really try to engage the committees to do, like you said, the heavy lifting. Council can take.
Can you imagine if city council basically had to detail review every single thing that the planning commission does? Or, or beaches, parks and recs? I mean, there's just, there's no way. I mean, there, there would be, there would be family crises, there would be divorces by city council members all day long. There would be, you know, like loss of mind, I screaming from the dais. I think what people don't understand is just how much, this is why I keep saying, like, whether I agree with you or disagree with you, whoever you may be, if you're stepping up to be of service, you know, hats off to you because it is a thankless job. There are people that you're not going to agree with you. Some people that are going to agree with you. You know, it's all of these dynamics and all the while, what you're trying to do is basically, you may be misguided, you may be clear, whatever it is. Like I said, I may agree with you or disagree with you, but you're still, your intention is to leave things better than you find them, to, to impact positively on people's life in your community, right? So I think we forget that sometimes when we very quickly start basically this sort of mudslinging and slash and burn. And we as a community, I have to say this, I've said it before, we as a community suffer and lose something when we basically forget our civility. We can disagree all day long. We can have different ways of maybe wanting to approach a problem and perfect example with the homeless situation, right? I mean, that is not only, you know, a complex issue. It's multi-layered. It's different by region. It's, it's, you know, you, you, in order to solve it, you know, good luck because, you know, it's solvable, but is, is this a sustainable solution or is it not? It's something that is as old as this country. You don't believe me? Anybody who's listening, go check out the homeless, homeless in America and look at the Wikipedia posting on that. I mean, it goes back to the, almost the foundation of the country. It's just the nature of the human condition. And how do we deal, how do we deal with that? Because it is definitely an impact on the community, whether you want to call it an eyesore or where you're going to call it a human tragedy, whichever way you want to go. So, so that is a very good point that you're bringing up Tyler, because I think it's a mistake to reduce the size of some of these committees. I think, I think you, you, not only is it a necessity based on the mission of these committees, but I think it, we, we lose out as a community because that tends to be, this is the case, you, your case, that tends to be, and I remember I, I tried to get on, on planning commission a couple of times. But it tends to be where you cut your teeth. It tends to be where you really are in the trenches. And in fact, you have no real high visibility. You're just basically acting in a supportive advisory capacity, but you really are in it. Right? And, and that's when you, and, and that's how we develop some of our leadership. I mean, it's the same as the leadership class.
I agree. And, and I've said before, I'm relatively agnostic about, you know, five members or seven members on, on these committees. I know it takes staff time and when you have more committee members, you know, meetings can possibly take more time and maybe get off track. But at the same time, it's good to have encouraged more involvement in, in what the city council is facing. And, and so very simply, I think that I, I totally understand what you're saying about how much a city council member has to, has to review. And I think that's where staff kind of comes in and, and helping to package, you know, what it is that the council has to vote on or take action on in a way that's easy to digest and understand so that they can, they can review a lot of different subjects. And, and I think that, you know, one of my missions would be to just wrap the, the committees more into the process so that they, they, they can do work, whether it's five or seven members. Regardless, I think that there's, there's a lot of energy there. There's a lot of opportunity to utilize.
The amount of, the amount of lifting doesn't get less. It's just a matter of how you distribute it. And if, so if you have less committee members that are basically volunteers and you're basically now having to maybe add on more staff support or whatever, depending on also the timeliness and the criticalness of the, an issue. Or city council basically has a little, I just, I, I wanted to just take this, the time to basically just explain that because I think a lot of people look at it, run for city council and they're like, they're seeing it as almost like a popularity thing. It's all the high visibility stuff, but there's so much that goes into what happens. And when, when we all kind of show up at the city council and make stars our right to his freedom of speech and basically voice our opinion on stuff. Sometimes we forget that not only is this, all this, this work that has been done, all the foundational stuff that has been done, all this, the time and man hours that went into something before it gets to city council. But also the fact that city council is subject to certain limitations and regulations. It's, it's, it's not a dictatorship. You don't get to sit at the dais and basically say, well, this is what I want to see happen. I mean, you're guided by whether it's Brown Act violations potentially, you know, all of the stuff that goes into that, and it is a complex role. So people that throw their hat into the ring that maybe don't really understand the nuances and are going to learn it on my dime, sitting in city council. That is an issue that I basically take into consideration when I am deciding on who it is. I need somebody that has local knowledge that has been involved. At the same time, I want somebody that is willing to maybe look at it through fresh eyes because we tend to be very legacy driven around here. And you know, whether we like it or not, the only thing that, the only constant is change and time changes things, even in beautiful San Clemente where, you know, we hold on to our history. I did for fifteen years on, on historical society, you know, we hold on to our history. Yeah, talk about a job that just kept on going. I mean, fifteen years on, on the board of the circle society. So let's talk about some of these issues or maybe you can, we can, we can take it from a different perspective. What are some of the platforms that you're running on? Because you obviously have a sense from having experienced it from the inside or where things maybe could be improved, right? But what are some of the things? Because I have my own feelings, but I'm going to let you go there first and then I'll see if you cover them. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I can say that having grown up here and, and, you know, seeing what it's like to be a kid in San Clemente and just growing up around people that have been here for a long time. There's a certain essence to, you know, being a San Clementan or even just to driving through San Clemente, like the the pace just slows down when you come through this town, you know? And, and coming back and getting, getting involved in, in, in government, I've seen that, that it, it doesn't necessarily reflect the population so much. You know, it's a really fast pace, like you were saying earlier, really divisive. And, and that's my number one platform goal is, is unity. I want to unite not only the council, but the town and the staff, I think particularly is, is an important one. Like you were saying earlier, there's so much to, to deal with, so much to focus on and so many limitations and liabilities to be.
We've been, we've been looking, we've been looking for places to lay blame. I think for the, for way too long and it, and we're starting to pay the price for it. We're starting, we, we, you know, if we, if we we obviously have polarization on city council. That's just, you know, kind of can't, you know, what is it that from like, almost like Twilight, you know, are you, are you, are you camp this or camp that, right? So it said, we do have that. I mean, there's no point in pretending that we don't, we do. And, and we do, we have been kind of like, well, no, it's, you know, the staff is the problem or the city manager is the problem or a particular city council member is a problem. Like we've been, we've been a little bit too driven from my, for a lot, for my liking in the blaying of blame.
Sure.
And it used to be that the divisiveness in the town was this side of the freeway and that side of the freeway.
Yeah.
It's become a lot more than just, you know, like inland and, and coastal.
True.
So, so here's the hard question.
Yeah.
How do we do that? What are some things that we could do better or we can basically cultivate that would basically, because that is, in my, in my opinion, that is a serious problem. And it could actually be a fracturing problem to what we hold dear in San Clemente.
If, I would say respect and dignity are, are the two key points that, that I, I think are important to focus on in, in attempting to unify the town and unify the council with the staff is treating each other with respect and dignity, treating the staff with respect and dignity and, and, you know, each other in the town and then among the council. I think that's, that's the key point. If we can just kind of level with each other, understand maybe we have differences of opinion and maybe even, you know, draw out what those differences in opinion are, but on the, you know, on the, on the basis of respecting each other's views. And when it comes to working with staff, I, I tend to agree with you. I think that maybe blame is, is placed on staff and maybe blame is due to a certain extent. But how do we address it? How do we, how do we dive into it? And I can say, having, you know, served as president of a, of a, of a government organization in the past, the staff is one of the most valuable parts of that organization.
Absolutely.
They do a lot of the heavy lifting, the compliance requirements, putting everything together and, and making the engine go. And, and so we have to, we have to really bring in the staff into the process in a productive and positive way.
Well, and continuously, here's, here's where I think, and you may agree with me or not, here's what I think we could do better. We could do better at the city council where when something, when the community is up in arms about the fact that a staff member or a person and part of that system is to blame or whatever, that we show some leadership on the city council where somebody is actually willing to stand up and say, well, look, let me just explain something here, right? This doesn't do us any good. We are looking into stuff, but, but really we are all in this together. We, 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 as council members depend on our staff. The staff does a good job, but we all basically have a continuous learning curve that we all always learn. Depending on the issue, depending on the time when it comes up, the, the variables in every issue are different. And so sometimes it feels like we throw people, like we throw people under the bus, like by not standing up and saying something.
Right.
Because we're worried, I don't know, we're worried about that we get reelected next season or whatever. From my perspective, if you get voted in to do a job, that is what you are there to do. If the minute you forget that that is the case and you start focusing on the fact that how do I basically get reelected for another run? Then we have wasted an opportunity for you to be in the job because that's not what your job is. Your job is to do the job. And part, and part of it, yeah, and part of it is basically standing up and saying, well, hold on a second. Let's, let's, let's bring it down a little here. Let's, let's, but I understand that the passions are high, but we, we need that kind of leadership. I mean, I mean, I think nationally, we need that kind of new leadership. Locally, we need that kind of leadership and, and, and it's time, it's due.
And, and to your point earlier, all politics is local, you know? And so that, that kind of healing in, in our political landscape, I think really should start at the local level. And that's essentially my goal. You know, that's my, my number one mission is to create that sort of sense of unity and you know, collaboration. I want to be an agent of collaboration among the council. I don't want to be, you know, hard to one side or hard to another side. I want to find what, you know, what is the balance? What, what is the, the middle ground that we can find as a council to move forward productively? And, and, and that's not to say that if, if somebody needs to be called out or if something needs to be brought to light to the community, that I wouldn't do it. I think it's important to do that. The question is.
Yeah. Well, and accountability is part of the process. I mean, you, you, you know, you, you don't get to be in a position of, of responsibility without having accountability. I totally get that. But then there's also, there's also, you know, vilification versus true accountability. And that, and I think that gets lost in the shuffle when it becomes a heightened emotional situation. I mean, I, I put up the sign behind me when you were talking about because it's, you, you know, you're pretty much are putting it right on your sign, unite and protect. There's that first word. Yeah. Right? Yeah. And, and, and I'll tell you why I kind of, I'm harping on this a little bit because every single time I have brought that up to people in San Clemente.
Yeah.
Think almost local pride dictates that we cannot admit that we are divided.
Yeah.
And, and, and yet we are, and we have been, and it was as simple as, well, you live on that side of the freeway. I live on this side of the freeway before.
Yeah.
Okay. Now that side of the freeway is no longer that side of the freeway and the backwaters and, you know, the back acreage, it's actually now connected to San Juan. So now that is, now that, that has subsided. They, Tulega has been around long enough. It is now basically part and parcel. But now we have other things that divide us. And, and, and some of them is based on issues and based on, well, you know, I think we should do this way or that way. That's why we have elections. I mean, that's why we have freedom to basically select our representatives every few years. So.
You're right. And, and the divisions are, are very nuanced, it seems. And they don't seem to be purely based on, you know, partisan politics. There's, there's other nuances that, that exist that I think create divisions in, in town. And, you know, when I was a kid in high school is, you know, this is before the outlets were built and it was just getting into town. And I remember that. I mean, admittedly, you know, I, we used to kind of make fun of the Tulega kids because they were new in town and they were different, you know? And, but now, like you said, Tulega and that whole side of town is part and parcel to the, to the town. And.
I mean, I mean, I mean, it's, you know, if you, if you, if you don't believe that we have differences and, and that, you know, we sometimes celebrate them. And, and I'm, I'm, I mean, it's kind of cool, you know, we got a little like, you know, across town rivalries, like literally, you know, downtown area versus Riviera versus North Beach, right? We, we have a little bit of stuff and that's part and parcel of the character of the town. And I think it's kind of evolves from the, from the surf culture a little bit. But, but you know, it's, 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 that's okay. I think to your point though, sometimes we forget some of those unifying moments, like we just went through a major, and I keep, I keep using this as an example, not because you know, I, I, I'm kind of, you know, I'm going to carry the, the, we used to say at the circle society, we, we, you know, we have the pitchforks and torches. They're just sitting in a closet next to the door. We don't do that anymore, but in case we need them, they're right there. So, so I'm not going to basically pick up a pitchfork and torch and basically, you know, kind of attack the toll road, but I want to just use this as an example. Sure. The toll road issue in San Clemente unified the town. So, okay, around one issue. And what is even more impressive about it is that it was, it, it was an issue that came up after we had an extremely divisive couple of, a couple of election cycles where we really got polarized and we really got into our own camps and we dug in and all this stuff, right? But when this issue came around, the whole town unified around it.
Yeah.
Right? And I think it's times when we are going to go down the path of looking for things that divide us, that we need to remember examples of that nature. Because when we united, we all know what ended up happening after a drawn out couple of years, but we know what ended up happening. We ended up putting that baby to bed once and for all this year. So, so sometimes, sometimes we need leadership to also remind us of that.
And I would add that the fight's not over on the toll road.
No, it's not, but it's in a, in a spot that it's pretty clear. I mean, and I remember when it first started a couple of years ago, like for the umpteenth time, right? That people are like, oh, you know, that's never going to happen. You guys are not going to be able to, I said, you guys don't know San Clemente. You really don't know San Clemente.
Yeah. And, and you think about why, why is it that people got so united on that issue? It's because we love this town for what it is, you know? And, and, and that's really what we can unite on. That's, that's what the entire town could be united on is that we love this town. And whatever that means in the minds of whoever you're talking to, we still love, everybody loves something about this town. There's a certain charm to San Clemente. And I think, I think, you know, it, looking into the future and thinking about what we could be united on, it's, it, it's creating somewhat of a shared vision on what it is in San Clemente that we do love. And, and I think that, you know, that'll, that'll come to light as we continue to move forward into the future. I think that, you know, it's, it's true that, that certain developmental projects, not just the toll roads, but others that have come up. Those have been, you know, areas of, of creating division in town.
Sure.
And, and, and it'll continue to come up. There will continue to be development projects coming up. And I think it's important to be kind of open about what our views are and, and, and what we want our town to look like. You know, there's a former council member who I really admire that says, you know, what's it going to look like in twenty years with every decision you make? What's it going to look like in, in twenty years?
Right.
That's such a great, you know, kind of framework or, or, or prerequisite to, to look at and making decisions. And, and I think that, that'll come up, you know, we've got the mirror. And, uh, and I think that, that'll come up, you know, we've got the Miramar being reconstructed and that whole area is going to be, you know, reinvigorated. And uh we should get ahead of it and really know what we want it to look like.
Do, do you know that that was the very first thing I ever did at the historical study 15 years ago was actually have a gathering in Tulega? And we basically purposely phrased it, celebrate the Miramar versus save the Miramar to change the narrative direction on it. That thing has been going on for so long.
Yeah.
And um I just drove by there the other day and Bowling Alley is gone and, you know, I, I've been, I have sets of plans and the proposals and stuff somewhere on, all these years for that. To your point, that is always going to be the case. I mean, the town was built by a developer that had a vision of a unique brand. And basically that is part of our heritage and legacy.
Right.
Also have, um, you know, uh, we have probably the largest inventory I'm aware of or of original buildings from the time of, uh, of, of inception that are still around, right? I mean, Dana Point destroyed their, their heritage as far as built out heritage. Uh, people are struggling to find things to have a uniqueness of identity and they're bringing in all these top paying, you know, branding companies to do it. We have this thing in space. We literally, we are, we, we are living history. Every time you walk down Del Mar, it's living history. So, but, but with that being said, okay, with that being said, and not being basically with blinders on, right?
Yeah.
We're also, we're also a built out town, Tyler. We are also a, a town that does not have a lot of undeveloped space. We live in a county and a part of California, if not the whole state, where the primary economic engine forever has been real estate development, real estate sales, all this stuff, right? And let me, let me just span this picture to you because I'm genuinely interested. And if you don't have an answer, that's fine, but I'm, I'm, I want to put it out there, right? This is one of those things that I have not had answered or even addressed by people that are, that are looking for, 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 uh, for elected office, not just simply by the way in San Clemente. Cause this also amplifies over, or over Orange County at the very least. We are, we are in, in aging, aging community, average age in San Clemente is somewhere on, on, if I'm not wrong, about forty five, maybe forty six, right? We're an aging community, we're a built out community. We live in, in an area where the majority of our first go-to is economic and as an economic engine to sustain the, the functionality of the city and provide amenities for the population is real estate development, right? We're not that. The only thing we can probably do going forward is spot zoning, which is its own, you know, nightmare of basically trying to be fair across the board and get that to happen, right? So, so what do we do? We're losing, we're losing some of the people. I mean, you came back after five years, right? You, you've been back for five years, but there's a lot of people that graduated out of San Clemente High School that, that cannot afford to stay in town.
Yeah.
That of, uh, you know, that have all the, the connectivity with the town. It's in their blood literally. And, you know, that they have not the ability financially to stay in town. We, we, uh, we have an aging population that's staying in their homes longer and rightfully so, right? So those homes, those homes are not being, uh, you know, um, transacted and therefore real estate uh taxes are basically, you know, grandfathered in for the majority of, right? It's not really market value. Uh, you got retail that is basically across the whole country is, you know, built out retail is, is dying, it's changing, it's morphing to whatever it's going to be. But on top of that, we have also because of the aging population, older people tend to buy less items. So you've got, you've got real estate uh taxes sort of stagnant. You've got sales taxes dropping. You've got, you've got a community that is older, that basically the town is responsible for providing certain amenities to. And we, we, all we know or all we have tried as economic engines is real estate development. So where does it, where does that, how does that uh fit with the role of somebody on city council? Looking at what is this town going to look like 20 years from now?
Yeah. And, and, uh, you know, to, to your point about uh the town being fully developed, we are pretty much fully developed.
We're built out.
And so, yeah, you know, it's, it's not so much a question of developing lands, new land, but maybe redeveloping existing land and that's probably a question that has come up already and will continue to come up. That's, that's the question that we'll face is when, when people propose development projects to redevelop existing properties, that's what we're going to face. And I think it's important for us to focus on kind of as a, as a guidepost, as a, as a north star. You know, the essence of what San Clemente is and part of that is, as, as you said, it's Ole Hansen Spanish Village by the Sea, you know? And, and we definitely want to preserve the heritage of San Clemente in that regard, the historical nature of some of the buildings in town. That's not the only aspect in town though. Um, there's also probably for, actually I'd say more of our history. The surf culture has kind of been a highlight of, of, of what San Clemente is. And obviously part of that's because of the world-class surf rates we have.
Yeah.
But, but it's just the culture that has naturally formed, organically formed in this town. And, and, and I, and I would, I, I would mention, you know, what I, the Los Molinos district, which has, you know, a number of world-class surfboard shapers there that have been there for ages. And that's a part of the culture that it's a really delicate balance. Like we want to preserve this culture that exists here and maintain it as much as we can. Um, but, you know, in the future, moving into the future, um, I think that area will continue to turn into a, a district that's um, that, that's more of a, a kind of commerce district that might attract tourists. You know, there's, it's an, it's got an arts component to it. And so I think we just have to think creatively about how we can enrich the small business community in San Clemente to actually uh improve the sales tax revenues that are coming in to the city without significant, you know, Newport Beach style development.
So here's, so here's a, here's a couple of thoughts for you because this is, this is what, what we're talking about right here. Whether it started off with the creativity of Ole Hansen and Vision. When, you know, we throw the word vision around a lot, but I think what we are missing and we have been missing is the fact that vision that we're talking about is not just solely in the field of construction or the field of surfing. The vision we're talking about is the creative energy, okay? The entrepreneurial spirit that basically found an outlet in the form of construction of a unique environment and in the terms of, of, of surfing. I think what we are missing honestly, and we have a great opportunity because it is such a desirable location to work, live, right? What we are missing is custom tailoring to our scale and our size of what we want to do, right? And with the tech, the way technology is these days, you can run the multinational corporation out of your own second bedroom, to be honest, right? So the scalability of build environments doesn't have anything to do with the success of a, of scale of a company anymore.
Sure.
So why are we not taking a leadership position on, for example, uh, entrepreneurship incubation, creative incubation? Look, look at the city of Long Beach, which is a big, I grant that it's a large city, but city of Long Beach understands that the future belongs to the new stuff that's going to be developed and evolved, right? In San Clemente, I'll tell you from my own perspective, as far as the design industry, in San Clemente, the gentleman who has since passed away, but the gentleman who was the go-to for ink renderings, okay, uh, for hotels and master plan projects all over the world, lived in San Clemente for most of his life. The person who was the go-to for digitally green screen backdrop walkthroughs and fly-throughs for the same stuff, for visualizations of massive projects, Dubai, uh, Asia, you name it, Hiltons, whatever, right? Is, is Gary Hedrick, who basically started San Clemente Green. He, he was, he is, he is the so go-to person all over for that particular thing. I don't know if Gary's still doing that or not, but he was. The, 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 um, Redmond Schwartz Martin that is down on Cabrillo.
Yeah.
RSM. Uh, they, they basically are the go-to for signage and wayfinding and, and thematic environments all over. They, they did the Ferrari building in Dubai. This is all homegrown in San Clemente. And yet, and yet we have not really taken a leadership position in developing the tools to get that person from high school, the person who did the half board, the locker board, right? I mean, you know, um, I, I don't know it, when you went to high school, but are you familiar with a gentleman by the name of Evan Van Aken?
No, I'm not.
So Evan Van Aken is, 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 is a friend and he's been on the show. Evan used to, went to high school. He, he did art in high school, then ended up following in his father's footsteps and became a fireman. He was laid out for a couple, for a couple of weeks because he had an injury while he was, uh, with, he was waiting to be assigned to a certain fire station. So he ended up developing something called the scorch pen. The scorch pen is a chemical, two chemical ingredients in a pen format and a marker for scorch marker, right? Where you literally can use your hand calligraphy to apply to wood and then applying a heat gun, it actually burnishes the wood, okay? That is a person that came from San Clemente High School, right? Okay. He started doing it where his goal was to sell one penny a, a week or something like that through Amazon, right? He had to basically get a small storage area and he's filling out something, I mean, like thirty-two hundred units a week or something, some crazy thing like that, right? This is, this is, this is a person that should be based in the San Clemente, Rancho San Clemente area. Should be a, a assistance is from the city to develop this stuff. Because that is the future money and entrepreneurs. That's the future leadership of the town. I'm not, I'm not knocking the people that are coming into San Clemente because now they can afford the, the, the prices of real estate. They're coming in from Villa Park or inland, right? And those are the people now that are engaging and running for office because they have the time. But we need to do better and, and apply the vision creativity that was behind Ole Hansen and behind the surf industry, right? And apply it to other things. What's next versus, I mean, and, and it's a hard one for San Clemente. I'll be the first admitted because we like to hold on to our heritage.
Sure.
But we don't lose our heritage if we apply the same creativity in developing other economic engines.
That's absolutely right. And, and we can, we can still preserve our heritage and, and innovate into the future in, in various ways.
In fact, in fact, you can house the new, the new businesses in that heritage. I mean, right? I mean, think, think about the fact that, okay, we're now, let, let's say that, let's say that we didn't know what to do with the Miramar, right? And let's say that that area was, or, or to your point, the Los Molinos district, right? I mean, I mean, that area, okay, could be an amazing live work situation with all kinds of incubation happening. It could, it could be almost like the, 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 the creative uh coast, if you will, right?
And, and I would actually say what's interesting about that, to your point about incubation, is that area is already an incubator.
Exactly. It's just not, it's just doing it on its own pace. It's, we, we have not taken on a city commitment of a vision of basically taking that, because I, I listen, what you're telling about me about that area being improved and all this stuff. I have been hearing that for over a decade and, and, and what I'm saying is it's not just a nicety. It's an SSS necessity. It's an essential component of what San Clemente will be.
Absolutely. And we need to preserve that, you know? And, and maybe that's why it hasn't happened on its own or it hasn't happened yet is because, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's an organically formed incubator. And, and anything organic takes a lot longer to make than, than things that are synthetic. And I would prefer it to be organic, but um I, I just, I guess what I'm saying is that the Miramar is going to uh catalyze um, people wanting to come in and do business in that area. And so we just need to be ahead of it to preserve that incubator that's existed there. And we have other businesses that have organically also sprouted up that, and, and are operating in San Clemente. We've got the founder of Dragon, I don't think Dragon's in town, but the founder is. And we've got Stan Sox and San Bazan and some really interesting companies that operate here, but I think you're right. I think that there's, there, there should be a thought process about, you know, what is the future? What, what can we really encourage and how can we, how can we incubate that and?
I mean, look, look, look at what just happened between the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Association, where they basically have developed a um, you know, a mask up San Clemente, right? To encourage people to basically do that, right? I mean, that, that is the chamber and, and, and the Downtown Business Association, right?
Sure.
That, the fact that the city leadership is not visibly involved in something like that is a missed opportunity. The, the city leadership in a case of incubation, we can sit back and say, well, you know, it's private business and they're just going to do it themselves. That's fine, but what we are losing in not taking the lead on something like this is who knows when, where, you know, like to the point of what I was saying with Evan, with Evan Van Aken, like who, who knows where the next, the next person with the next winning situation that basically goes on Shark Tank is going to come from. Is it from San Clemente High School? Which class of San Clemente High School? I mean, and we have, we have the ingredients that cultivate that kind of mindset, right? And then we basically are not trying to keep them. The other side of the equation, the people that are elderly, right? The, the, the seniors community in, in San Clemente, which I would never call them senior or elderly to their face. I think they will basically shoot me. But basically, there, there, it's not your, it's not your grandfather's older person. It is a you, a younger, older person. It's somebody who is still active, still doing the beach trails, still basically, you know, riding the mountain bike in, in the hills. So, so our, our approach to providing services to them, we are at a critical, critical junction as a nation. But, you know, especially in an area where we have a high concentration of people that are over an elder, of, of, that are aging. Is that, that senior center in the middle of town, right? Is that senior center in the middle of town that is continuously getting less and less usage? Should we really be reimagining that in order to make it a contributing factor to the community, not in terms of developing it into a for-profit situation? But what services can we offer through there? I'm throwing all this at you, Tyler, because these are realities that are not going to go away. You, you know, the, the gentleman who runs Age Well, um, Steve Moyer, um, is a friend and he's been on the show a number of times. He basically told me two shows ago that by twenty twenty-five in the, in, in Orange County, one out of five people will be over the age of sixty-five.
Yeah.
Now you and I both know that that high, that number is a higher percentage in town.
Mm-hmm. Yes, absolutely.
So those people have something to contribute. They have a wealth of knowledge. How are we channeling all of that to benefit an upcoming generation that can then be a contributing economic powerhouse in the town?
Yeah.
We're not doing that.
Yeah. And, and before I answer that question, I just wanted to mention one more point on the, on the Downtown Business Association and the, in the chamber. I do think the city is doing a pretty good job to work with those organizations, uh, namely Jonathan Lightfoot, uh, who's the new community development director. He's done a great job in spearheading the, uh, the dining on, or the open air dining on Del Mar project. And, and they have done a good job, maybe behind the scenes sort of, but you're right, the, the.
They should, but they should, they should, the city leadership should come out and basically be a face representation to this. Because, because by, by doing so, even though they may be, uh, you know, uh, can, there may be city council members that maybe are supported by one side or the other. But that is an opportunity for the city council, regardless of which camp they're in, to stand steadfast, shoulder to shoulder on something that benefits San Clemente visibly.
Absolutely. I agree. And, and we could do more of that for small businesses. It was my point, but back to the senior center.
Yeah.
I actually just had a conversation with Beth Apodaca the other day, um, who's kind of the director of the, the senior center locally. And she enlightened me on, on the operations and the origin of, of that senior center and, and how the, the uniqueness of, of that center for Age Well compared to, you know, ten other centers that they have uh around the area. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's owned by the city. It's maintained by the city. It's leased to Age Well for, for, you know, very low annual cost. And, uh, and they, and they operate. And obviously right now during COVID nineteen, there's almost, you know, nothing that they can do in person. So they're trying to do a lot of things virtually. Um, but I think, you know, to, to the discussion we were having earlier about activating the energy of the populace in San Clemente or the residents in San Clemente, I think that that's, the, the senior center is kind of like a, um, it's a, it's a hub that would allow us, if we wanted to get feedback from, from seniors in San Clemente. They would be the go-to and they could spread that word and, and we could collect that. And that's kind of something I'm really big on. Not just with the committees and commissions, but with just, just the population in general, trying to communicate more, trying to have a more open line of communication between the council and the community so that it doesn't end up people, you know, storm council meetings with their pitchforks, you know? We, we want to, we want to prevent that. We want.
You're, you're still going to have that because it's just part of the game, but yes, I totally hear you.
But, but you know what I'm saying? It's uh just, just trying to be proactive in engaging the voice of, of residents and seniors are definitely a part of that, as you said.
I, I, I totally agree. I mean, I think, I think, um, we, we really, it's an exciting time if you look at it not as a challenge, whether or not as an opportunity. And I think that's, that's sort of the bigger overarching picture also of COVID. I mean, this kind of, we're talking about Age Well. I mean, I, I, I'm about to drop an episode with, with an interview with Steve Moyer. And, you know, they were talking about this, this, um, this great plates program, you know, like here's a gentleman. For those who don't know, and you know, check it, check the episode out when I do it. But, um, you know, uh, Steve basically comes from multi chat, multi uh unit chain restaurant, operational and executive background. He was on the board of the advise, advisory board for Age Well and then became the new C executive director. Uh, uh, so the funny thing is, I, first thing I said to him was, did you ever think that your restaurant experience was going to come into play so much? You know, when you took on this job and he goes, no, but what happened is they literally, they have thirty restaurants, which I thought was a brilliant collaboration. This is kind of the thing that outside of the box thinking that we should be doing, right? They have thirty restaurants that are pre, that had to qualify, that had to have like, you know, um, background checks for their drivers and all this stuff, right? But thirty restaurants that are now acting as a feeding arm managed by Age Well operationally, but are providing food to a larger demand that is because of COVID. The, the byproduct of that exercise is that these thirty restaurants have been able to sustain a livelihood during a crisis.
Sure.
And the further impact is that because of this and because of the need to operate at a higher level with more safety concerns and security and all this stuff, they now have also developed their own delivery system. So now when we come out of this, those restaurants not only were able to survive this, but have actually evolved into a different entity altogether that will give them a more higher chance to thrive. This is kind of out of the box thinking
Yeah.
that we need to have when we are challenged with stuff.
I, I completely agree with you and COVID nineteen has. I, I completely agree with you and COVID nineteen has become the catalyst. Uh, I, I mean, it's, it's maybe one positive of all the negatives in this situation, but it's become a catalyst for that, that innovation, you know? The type of innovation that has been brewing for years that we haven't quite taken the shift over to. And you and I sitting on a Zoom meeting, uh, you know, right now to, to do your show.
Changing, changing images at a click, by the way. I mean, this is, really?
Yeah, and and, you know, my Rotary Club has shifted to, to Zoom meetings and we're broadcasting them on Facebook Live. And we're just doing a lot of things that we wouldn't have been doing otherwise. And there's so much more that we could be doing, particularly within the city, to utilize technology to our advantage, to improve the situation and support residents. And and as you mentioned, businesses, I think that's kind of a, a big highlight is supporting businesses.
So so when you say unite and protect, what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is unite, find things that unite us more than divide us, emphasize those, put the energy, positive energy into that. And then the protect, to me, sounds like, because when I saw that, it's like, you know, does that, does that same as protect and serve on the side of, of, of a police? The protect that you're talking about is what? Tyler, I know what it is, but I want you to say, what is, what is the protect that you're protecting?
There's, there's actually a lot in that category. And 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 I would, I would say probably the simplest way to put it is, is part of the mission statement of the city of San Clemente, which is to protect the health, safety and quality of life of the residents of San Clemente. There's a lot in there. There's a, there's a lot to unpack in that statement. Um, but but I, I wanted to say protect because there's so much to the word protect that we could be focusing on. And 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 I think it's, it's protecting our future as a city, as a city government. Once we've united ourselves, we have to search for a city manager. We have to really dive into our budget so that we can protect our financial future as a city. Um, we need to protect the quality of life of our residents in so many ways, whether it's addressing the issue of homelessness or, you know, focusing on mental health uh, or protecting our coastlines. Uh, there's much, I think, that falls underneath that protect category. Um, but but it, it, none of it, I don't think, can be done until we're united, which is why that word is first.
Well, you know what? I think, I think that is a perfect place for us to end this because, um, and then, and and how do, how do people find about, about, more about you? I didn't put the website up there, but well, how do people can find out about you? How do they contact you, Tyler?
Yeah, it's a very simple, TylerBowden.com. Um, or you can visit my Instagram or Facebook page, Tyler Bowden, the number four S C. And, uh, and yeah, uh, would love to hear questions from anybody. Um, my, my email and and cell phone number is on the website. So feel free to reach out with any questions. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about anything on my platform.
That's awesome. I will, I, when, when we drop this, I'll make sure to basically include that into the, into the posting. But, uh, I appreciate you taking the time, man. I wish you all the luck with this.
Um, thank you, Ron.